I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We call the March 15th Umatilla County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I do want to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and that there is a call-in option along with a virtual option, and we will monitor who's on the video virtually from here. Also, meetings are now live streaming. Comments will become part of the meeting record. If persons wish to speak before the board, please limit comments to three minutes. Please identify yourself and state where you live in order to be heard on the record. Also note if you are speaking on behalf of others. So all we're asking is that you keep your comments to three minutes. We have 27 items on our agenda today, and so we're going to go ahead and get started and work through those. The... Hold on just a second. My computer jumped the track here. It just updated with another item. Awards, recognitions, or correspondence. Commissioner Tum?
Do not.
Commissioner Schaefer?
None for me either.
Other than, I would like to mention that I was in a Battle of the Books last night in Hermiston. It's part of the Oregon Battle of the Books program. I was on the Kiwanis team, and I thought we were going to read books, like a read-a-thon, but it was to recap the five books that you read. So my other three team members were not happy that I hadn't read the other six books. But we ended up taking second place. So it was a fun event. It was great for all the kids in the Hermiston school district. And they recognized all the winners and the whole program. The program actually started in Hermiston 40 years ago by one of the teachers in the system, and now is a statewide program and is operated in over 100 different school districts. So it is kind of fun, and I enjoyed it. My team members would probably argue that, that we did make it through to second place. So that was fun. Approval of minutes from the previous meetings, March 1st, 2023, and March 10th, 2023.
This chair of approval?
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 1st and March 10th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? Anyone? At this time, will have any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Anybody have a public comment for an item that is not on the agenda? Thank you. Moving on, the first item on the agenda is a sanitary service rate increase.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Gina Miller, and I am the county staff liaison to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We are before you this morning in the matter of a rate increase request for sanitary disposal, the solid waste franchise holder for West County. A brief summary of this process as outlined in Chapter 50.070, Section G. Sanitary Disposal submitted a rate increase request to the county on January 16th, 2023. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee then met on January 17th and reviewed the application. They voted unanimously to recommend the application to the board for final approval. Following that, a public notice was published in the Eastern Oregonian on Saturday, February 25th. The public notice was also posted in three prominent public locations on that same day. The public notice period ended on Friday, March 10th, and as of 5:00 PM that day, the county had not received any written responses. Today, this matters before you for your consideration, and it is my pleasure to introduce Mike McHenry, the current chair for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and Kevin Miracle, the operations manager for sanitary disposal. They are here to answer any questions you might have. So I'll turn the floor over to Kevin.
Thank you, Gina, and welcome, Kevin and Mike. I think that there are several questions that we do have, so maybe we can work through those. Commissioner Tum?
Go ahead.
I'll start with mine, and then they may roll into others too, Kevin, as that goes. But looking at both the rates that Gina placed into the record, plus what you guys, the worksheet, the Waste Connection put together, we've got a couple of questions on the Waste Connection. On your sheet, it says total LF increase. Is that like a local franchise fee increase, or what is?
That's a landfill, so that's how much Finley Butte has increased our rate, just going through the gates.
And when was that? Is that a yearly?
That was, I believe it was in December of last year is when they increased it.
Ted? My next question is, and it gets kind of to the nuts and bolts of where I am, is we gave, Waste Connection came before us in November to ask for a rate increase, and you're asking for another, basically 17% of the landfill increase, and what you're asking for is the business increase. If the paperwork just has your increase, it doesn't include the landfill increase. So it's really closer to 17% if you add both of those together. And in November, which was only five months ago, we gave a 5.5% increase to Waste Connection. So we're talking really 23% increase in 12 months. That's pretty hefty.
So the last time that, let me find my paperwork here. The last time that Mike came in for a rate increase was in September of 2019. So basically, we just took the CPI from 2019 and the CPI from December of 2022. And you're right, it comes up to 17.42%. We know that we increased the county in November, so we backed off that 5.5% and it comes to the 12.42%.
So you're not asking for the landfill increase because?
It's married into that 12.42. So you can see the landfill increase is eight cents for, say, a 35-gallon cart.
Right.
Our increase is $1.52. The total is $1.61, and that's all in.
But if you average all of these, it doesn't come to 12.42?
No, because not all of them are going to be the same, because some of the increase for the landfill is already kind of married into some of the numbers off the CPI.
But that, again, 5.5% five months ago, now you're asking for... My math skill has it at about 17%.
Well, that's, when you minus the 5.5 off there, that's what it brings it back down to, the 12%. I get where you're saying, but the, you know, the CPI has went up 17% since the last rate increase, which is in September of 2019. We came to you guys in November, you know, you guys allowed us to have the 5.5%. Well, then, when you kind of roll everything up in total from 2019 to 2022, that's the piece that we're trying to recapture also.
I got to be honest with you, Kevin, that's kind of not how we look at rate increases. We don't go from, we gave you 5.5 in 2019 or in 2022, but we're going to go back to 2019 on the 2023 increase. That doesn't...
Well, this was to get a year underneath our belt, too. And once we finally, you know, got through December and January to actually see where our financials fell, then we were able to make a more informed decision. So last year, with the price of fuel, our cardboard is at a zero going out the gates, our wage pressure with the team, and then how much parts and labor and everything costs. You know, this is, we're just trying to recapture from 2019 to November of '22. And this is common across the board. It's the same thing that we've done with the city of Umatilla. We did a 5.5 with them, we're minusing that off, and then Morro County. Every, you know, Hermiston, I got in at 15, a little over 15%.
Yeah, I have issues with jumping back, leapfrogging back over rate increases. It just doesn't... I would rather take a closer look at this. At least my opinion, I'm just one of three. But where I am, Kevin, is we gave an increase in November at 5.5%. And we asked quite a bit of questions then, and so I thought we were pretty clear when we gave that, because we actually asked you, how come you're not asking for more? And the response was, well, this time we're asking for 5.5%. So to jump back over that 5.5% and then to try to, I mean, we could go back to 2018 and say that Mike didn't ask for enough in 2019. So I mean, where does that?
I don't think, it's not so much enough. It's exactly what the CPI is doing, and Mike would come in every three years and do a 10% to 15%. Well, we were there for a year. There hasn't been anything captured since 2019. So there's, you know, there's kind of a delta that we need to be able to get caught up to in order, you know, for us to be a healthy business also.
You said since 2019, but we did give a rate increase in 2022.
Yeah, and that's why we're minusing the 5.5% off that. So it's not coming in at 17, it's coming in at 12.42.
I have problems with that, and I'm not sure what you're using for the CPI, but...
It's a consumer price index, and it's the one you look up, yeah, you look up online.
You're using the national level one, yeah. Which is a little bit skewed for Eastern Oregon, too. There is no doubt about that. I know that you've taken it to the committee and those type of things. I don't think I can support this right now. I'm not against it. I just, I don't have enough supporting information to get there yet.
Can I ask a couple?
Sure. Yeah, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to own anybody.
And that's fine. Dan just jumped, I mean, that was exactly what I was going to ask, a couple of those questions. And I'm a business owner. I definitely understand where you're coming from. It has been tough to be in business, especially since pre-COVID, and everything has just jumped. My question to you, sir, is the consumer, you're going to have consumers that are going to, they're going to have, you're going to pass this on to the consumer, of course. Also, on the other side, I'm going to use a very simple example, milk jugs, okay? So milk jugs, the plastic in milk jugs, the producer of milk jugs, right? They are going to, the amount that they're going to be, the fines and fees that they're going to have to pay to be in a landfill is going to increase because, you know, recycling is going to be a conversation. They're going to pass that on to you, which is going to turn right around, and they're going to pass that back to the consumer. So the consumer is going to be hit from the production of the milk jug and then from getting rid of the milk jug. So I have a real problem, too, with this. I mean, this is, and I realize you've got a business to run, and I definitely understand where you're coming from. But on the other side of it, I think we really need to take a close look at, you know, streamlining some of this down, because people, they're just getting hit hard.
I think for Waste Connections, us just coming in once a year is all we want to do. You know, I was trying to stop some of the bleeding last year with the 5.5%, having the increase that we got from Finley, and then our wages and the amount of capital that we put in in the first year also. So we would prefer just to come in, January, meet with SWAC. This is what we're doing off CPI. This is what it's going to be, and then you know every year. Instead of us trying to catch up, learning what Mike did, what I need to catch up from 2019, because that's a pretty big delta that we have there, so.
Yeah, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, because you're getting hit on more than one side on this deal, and I get that. And I apologize for my simple milk jug example.
No, it helped me understand.
But the idea is, is that this is a pretty steep hike, and I, yeah, I'm with Dan. I think that we need to take a little bit closer.
Again, I'm not against it. I just, I need to make sure that I understand it. And you brought up a really good, I'm sorry, Tom.
Nope, no, go ahead.
You brought a round here or what?
I'm going to go a different direction.
Rocking around that milk jug thing.
You did bring up a good point that I would like to ask. And I sat through the DEQ meeting, and some really interesting questions came up. And one of them was, is the county going to participate countywide? So that's 33,000 people in the county that aren't in a municipality. And Waste Connection said, no, we probably won't participate at the county level. But those expenses, the milk jug for one, one of many, those expenses are going to get pushed down to you as a whole. So that's still part of your expense. So in reality, the county will be, to some degree, subsidizing the municipalities as we do this, because you're not going to, your expenses aren't going to be different, no matter what the producer pushes down. Your expenses are going to stay the same. Whether you have to handle it 15 times for the city, you're going to have to handle it 15 times for everybody that comes to the transfer station or the depot. So that's a kind of another additional expense that the county, it may not be but 5% to 10%, but it's still an expense that we will shoulder as a county residence and not municipal. Not, even, Mike, maybe I'm wrong in that interpretation, but it kind of seems like we're going to be getting, the county residents are going to be kind of getting hit from both angles. Both the recycling angle, even though we don't participate because of the expenses, plus the 17% increase in rates. Am I looking at that right?
Yeah, you know, the DEQ, you know, the right, you know, the Modernization Act, I mean, that's here. You know, and you're right, everything's going to have to go to the consumer. We're all going to pay for it, you know? So yeah, that is a piece of it. That's one that I don't have control over, and we don't even know what it's going to look like, because they're just finishing the needs assessment.
Rules are still here.
Yeah, but yeah, you're...
Thanks, Mike, for that.
But yeah, you're totally right. I mean, that's going to, that's going to hit everybody, and it's going to look like, you know, we came in at 5% November '22, and now we're asking for another one. We'll loop back around, ask for another one, and then we'll start talking about what it's going to cost a consumer when this, the recycling thing gets put into place, so.
Just out of curiosity, because I don't want to speak for the others, Kevin, but if in the next couple of weeks, could we sit down with you and have a conversation? You guys object to that?
I would appreciate that, and I would also like to just pick your brain as an expert about what you see as far as...
Don't give me too much credit.
He is, I'll hear him. Kevin does a great job.
As far as this Modernization Act goes, I went to a couple of city council meetings across the county in the last week or so. Boy, that's the top of their list, is the recycling, what it's going to look like. And they're gearing up for some costs, and they're a little afraid about, you know, how they're going to pass that on to their citizens. So I would like to have that conversation.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big topic, for sure.
And the other thing is, I don't disagree with your CPI. I don't know if you understand, but the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics discontinued the Portland-Salem, Oregon and Washington CPI series after 2017. We can drill down and get comparable CPI information for Eastern Oregon. It's a little more complicated than just going off of this, but it is substantially different, too. And if maybe we can kind of prep some of that discussion.
Yeah, and we don't pull off that 2017 number.
No, this is the new number.
Oh, okay.
This is the national CPI. But there's no such thing as an Oregon CPI, Washington CPI, or regional CPI anymore. They all are done individually. And Business Oregon and the Oregon Employment Department have different numbers than what's here. So if you're not using those, maybe we can get together and go through those so that we can come up with a number that we all agree on. It's, I mean, if we look at the CPI nationally, or even the cost of inflation, in the last five months, it's only 1.8%. If you look at it year over year, it's extreme. So I think, I think having a sit-down discussion, at least in my opinion, before we approve this, I think everybody might be a lot more comfortable and knowing how you want to move forward.
Yeah.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask Mike if he would mind coming up and telling me how the board voted on their approval on January 17th.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, because I saw where you guys did approve it on January 17th. I just kind of wonder how that went down.
So I have a couple of points I'd like to make. And I am neither in favor or opposed to their increase, but I'd like to say a couple of things. Having years and years of experience on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and being the chair, I will say this. In the past, sanitary disposals rates for Hermiston, Stanfield, Echo, Umatilla, et cetera, historically have been significantly lower than surrounding communities, compared to Pendleton, compared to Pilot Rock, compared to the DOWs, compared to Tri-Cities. So when you look at what they're requesting, please look at surrounding communities' rates for comparable services. I think that's really important, because as a company, sanitary disposal has historically had lower rates than everywhere else around. So in fairness to them, that needs to be taken into account.
Yeah, and thanks, Mike, because I did go through some of the other cities, too, so that even generated more questions.
Right, but I think that's a really valid point in this argument. Second, regarding the CPI, that's correct. And we all used, historically used the Portland-Salem CPI index, which went away. And the city, and this is just for information, the city of Pendleton has gone to the Pacific Region CPI. That's what we're using, which, and I'm preparing my annual report for the city Monday, actually. 2021 was 7.5% for the Pacific Region, the CPI. 2022 was 6.5%. So where Kevin's coming from is what we're using. Now, the city of Pendleton limits us to 3.5%. We can't take the whole CPI, but that's the city ordinance, so that's apples and oranges. The point is...
Thanks for the tip.
What's that? The point is that we have, and the reason, the answer to your question about the Solid Waste Committee voting unanimously is because, I'll give you some examples, and again, I'm preparing my annual report for Monday. Our fuel cost increased 67% in 2022 over 2021. That's just one thing. Fuel, insurance, in our case, we, to compete, and Kevin said that, to compete with labor, not losing employees and being able to attract new drivers and equipment operators, we arbitrarily raised our union labor rates 9.1% September 1st. We had no choice. My point is, these costs are real. What's that?
We didn't need to hear that piece.
I'm just telling you, that's the, it's, I've done this a long time, so it's Kevin, and we are in unprecedented times as far as cost increases. So that's my spiel.
And you're more than, I think, depending on what the commissioners do, I think that if you, Mike, if you wanted to join Kevin...
Absolutely. Glad to.
That would be great.
And I would appreciate if you had those figures, you know, exactly how you came up with this number and, you know, some of the background, just some of the information that you just gave we didn't have, so.
I won't go into great detail, and Kevin might have, with Waste Connections, have much more. The way our industry does rate setting in most of Oregon is by gross margin. That is net income divided by gross revenue. That target normally is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is 10%. That's what we're targeting, and that's what we're trying to set rates on. And I haven't seen the financials, I don't know the picture, but that's how rate-setting methodology in a franchise collection system normally works.
Mike, obviously, we know who you are, but would you say who you are for the record?
I'm sorry, yeah, Mike McHenry with Pendleton Sanitary Service, and I'm chair of the Umatilla County Solid Waste Committee.
Thank you.
You bet.
What's the wishes of the legislature of the House?
I think, I'm going to call to your leave and have a discussion.
I'd go to council and see if we can't suspend this vote until the next meeting or until table...
Can we table it?
Well, I was going to table it.
What's the effective date, Kevin?
That would have been April 1st.
Can we send you a day?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm glad to be there, if you need me.
Would you like me to set that up, Commissioner?
That would be great if you could help us with that.
Looks like there might be some available dates before April 5th.
Okay. If you block out an hour, Kevin's going, geez, I don't want to put up with these guys for a month.
And, you know, we can, we can be flexible with April, you know, if it pushes too long in discussions, we can...
We don't want to do that to you. We just want to have a conversation.
Okay.
So I would move to table this item until a date to be set in the future.
Second?
Nope, you have it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, you guys.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the discussion. All right, next item on the agenda is... PATH Project, David Stockdale? Come on up, David.
All right. Commissioner Dorn and commissioners, thank you very much for having us here today. My name is Dave Stockdale. I'm the city manager with the city of Umatilla, and at my site here today is Jesslyn Cole. She's the executive director of Stepping Stones Alliance, who is our contracted partner for our project PATH. We have an update with you today. Apologies for the tardiness in getting it over to you. So this is our, this was the second quarter report, which ended at the end of December of last year. It was provided to the PATH Advisory Committee in January, and since then, we've been sort of making the rounds to the elected boards. We started with the city of Hermiston, and we've been to the city of Umatilla. You're number three in the queue, and we'll be working, we'll be heading to Echo and Stanfield, too, in the next month or so. We'll go through this report briefly, and then Jesslyn has some updated information as well, some updated numbers that are, we're happy to share with you today. But also, just wanted to, the last time that we met in a public meeting was the joint session between us, Hermiston, and yourselves. And then, of course, since then, we've formed a lot of things. We have now intergovernmental agreements that have been established with all the partners for this project. We have a lease agreement with the county for approximately two acres of a property located on the corner of Lind and Vensel Road. And we've gone out to bid and contracted with Stepping Stones Alliance. So there's been a lot of work that's obviously occurred during that time, which, of course, encountered, encapsulated, I should say, I think, three different public meetings as well through that process. So it's been, it's been quite a bit. So I'll pause with that for just a second, actually, let you introduce yourself a little bit further, if that's all right?
Sure. Jesslyn Cole. So I was hired beginning of February as executive director of Stepping Stones Alliance and have quickly caught up on what has happened before I was hired. Also, big news, we did hire Carolina Delgado, so she's our navigation director. So we're getting fully staffed and ready for our permanent location. Let me share numbers now?
Give me just a moment, yeah. So first, I want to say, so as we're working towards that facility, and if it's okay, I'm going to bounce around the report a little bit, just because it's nice to be organized this way, but sometimes just the conversation flows a little different. The, at the moment, just for your information, the facility is in a temporary location at the old Sears building in Hermiston. Courtesy of Mike Atkinson and Atkinson Staffing, they are letting us use that facility without charge. And they're also letting us, they're also providing us shuttling services free of charge as well to the facility. So some of the added levels of service for the sleep center as compared to years past, when it was a part of PATH, is this opportunity where we can, we have one pickup in the evening and one drop-off in the morning as well. And so while we are working on facility improvements and getting that ready, Atkinson Staffing has been very generous in assisting us, making a facility available, make sure that we didn't have a disruption in services in the sleep center. To that extent, in the report, you can see that we have some general construction of the individual... housing units. The, right now, I think we have three that are totally constructed. And Jesslyn can get into a little bit more about some service dates that we have here coming for volunteer opportunities, because it's been, all materials were donated and all the labor for those have been volunteer labor. And so all that has been very good and continues to have some great energy and movement going forward. We've purchased the sleep center building. We've purchased the Navigation Center. What will become the Navigation Center building has been donated to us as well. Shower units, trailer is also available. One of the things that I think was, has been a little bit of a surprise through this process was just how difficult transportation to and from the facility has been. We, we had anticipated it to be simple, add a stop, maybe adjust times and things like that, and pay the delta on whatever additional cost might be associated with that. But public transportation and logistics I am learning, and we are learning, are far more complicated than, than that. So the good news is, is again, Atkinson Staffing has stepped up and is providing a shuttle service, which is working very, very well. But as the facility grows over time, that's not going to be entirely sustainable. And so we are continuing to meet with Kayak and have had great progress on that moving now and have a good vision, I think, moving forward. In the meantime, so we're starting to look at grant opportunities to purchase another, another shuttle bus and perhaps even look at staffing as well. So we can answer any questions you might have on that, too. In the meantime, House Bill 4123 requires us to develop a five-year strategic plan. We've contracted with Carla McClain to help us with that. She's helped the city of Umatilla a lot, and she's, she's a former planner and community development staff for Morrow County, and she's now been a consultant in the, in the region now for a better part of three years now. And so very happy to have her on board. We have, we have draft strategic plan that's been provided to the advisory board, and that'll be, again, reviewed at that meeting next week. There's a budget associated with this, and then, of course, we have numbers and partnerships. And I will, essentially, I'll leave that there and kind of hand that to you to kind of give you some updated numbers. You have on your last page of this packet what the numbers were through. December, we saw, you know, 388 total guests. 53 of those were unique guests. We, of course, have updates for January and February. If you'd like to go ahead and add those.
Sure, so daily average in January, guests was 16. We had a total for that month of 502 headcount, and 61 of those were unduplicated. And that's unduplicated from December as well, so new guests. And then, excuse me, in February, our daily average was 12, and our total headcount was 341 and five new unduplicated guests. So fortunately, unfortunately, the pit count does not actually match up with what we're seeing in our facility. So that's something that is concerning and something that we're definitely trying to share across the state, that the numbers aren't, we're seeing more numbers than are being counted. So we want to make sure to get that recognized.
Kind of in relation to that, one of the questions we get a lot is, where are they all coming from? Are, did we have a Field of Dreams paradox here? Did we build it and now they're coming? And what we're finding is answered is a resounding no. There, these are our residents. These are people from Hermiston, Umatilla, Echo, Stanfield, and in the surrounding unincorporated areas of the county. There are, of course, one or two that are sort of the exception to that rule, but by and large, I believe the majority of these, unduplicated, or these unique visitors to the facility are from here. And so I think what we are actually seeing is that now that this program exists and it's more organized and that we, it's contracted and, and government is now, through a regional partnership with nonprofits, is putting out the message, people are, fewer people are, that were couch-surfing before are now taking advantages of this, that were sleeping on the streets are now taking advantage of our program. And so I think this is sort of, the, the need was identified. It's now been organized, and people are taking advantage of those services. With that, I think we can pause and answer any questions you might have at this point, or we can talk to the report if you wanted to. Answer any, or have any questions about that directly.
First of all, I want to address, thank you for bringing up the fact that they're not being bussed in. That's the question I get all the time, is are they getting bussed in? So I'm glad you addressed that. Where do you, where do you find that information at? Is that coming from, from intake? Is that where you're getting that from?
Yes.
Yeah, so each, each resident or visitor of the facility, whenever possible, we end up creating essentially a resident portfolio. And that's one of the questions that we ask is, where are you from and how did you get here today? And get some, as much information that we can get.
Last question I have, unique guests. What is defined as unique?
That they haven't stayed with us before.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's very concerning that your numbers don't mesh up with your pit count. And the reason, and not from your side, from the pit count side, is because I know that those folks, 3:00 in the morning, they were out on the streets of Hermiston and/or other cities to try to get those counts. So, and, you know, those are important. So especially for nonprofits. Why don't you think they're matching up?
It's a really challenging population to count. They don't necessarily want to be seen or counted. And it's one point in time. So where they were seen last week, they may not be in that area this week when we go out to count. So we do work a lot of partnerships, and that is an ongoing discussion. How can we make that more valid? How can we get that count to be more accurate? So we're definitely fine-tuning that and working with other organizations to make sure that's more accurate.
Are some of the folks that you're seeing in your facilities couch-surfers?
Yes and no. I mean, we even have some that were sleeping in their cars before they knew this service was available. So it just, it depends.
I'd spend $100 on that pit count.
Yeah, yeah, and that wouldn't take them into account.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jaclyn, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
First of all, thanks to David and the city of Umatilla for doing the heavy lift on this. It started almost a year and a half ago. The journey hasn't been as rapid as, as we hoped for, but it has been very, very efficient, I think, in the way that it's come together. And I appreciate that a lot. I think the pit count is, is something that needs to be addressed in a lot of different, for a lot of different reasons. One is we're looking at, at populations in metro areas that are getting substantial dollars on pit counts that covered 14 days. So obviously, there were some multiple counting there. I'm not here to dispute it because I know they're out there. You can just look out your car window and know they're out there. But how those, how those percentages and how the formula to get funding came together was questionable to me, especially after sitting down in Salem and listening to the justification and the, and the knowledge that it's a challenged number. We don't have that opportunity here. Our pit counts are one to two days, depending on what you apply for. And that, that causes other issues. And then the combination of the pit counts and the county counts and how you, how you define those just puts another layer on there that's hard to work through. I mean, it's almost like fighting out of a gunny sack sometimes. You can find a hole, but by the time you, you get the second arm through it, everything else is collapsed around it. So I, I do applaud you guys. I look forward to it. I mean, I could sit here and talk all day on it because I think it's one of the, I mean, my passions are parts there. I, I am super glad to see Jaclyn onboard.
Jesslyn.
Yes.
It's okay. Seems to be a common theme. Our name is very tricky.
So I, I am extremely happy. Yeah, I look forward to, as the momentum's already there, it kind of just starts rolling downhill and gets quicker and quicker. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Planning Division Authorization.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Planning Director, or Community Development Director. Thank you. That's what this item is for. Back earlier this year, we completed a reorganization of the Planning Department, becoming Community Development Department. And as part of that change, we appointed a Planning Division Manager rather than a Planning Director. And so currently, in our development code, many of the provisions in there speak to Planning Director rather than Planning Division Managers being the authorized agent. And so we're requesting you to approve our Planning Division Manager, Megan Dobchewski, to be the acting, to act as plant, have all the responsibilities that are assigned to the Planning Director. This includes signing Platts, approving findings, processing applications, things, activities like that. So unless there's any questions.
Questions? Entertainer motion.
I authorize the Planning Division Manager to have the power and duty to enforce the provisions of the Umatilla County Development Act.
Second motion. Entertainer motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Sheriff's Vehicle, Sheriff's Office Vehicle Repair.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Roberts, Criminal Division Lieutenant, the Sheriff's Office. Before your request to approve continuance of a vehicle repair, so on January 28th, vehicle 2105, which is one of our Dodge Pursuit Durangos, was damaged during a vehicle pursuit. At the time, we got multiple estimates. Zimmerman's in Athena was the one that came up with the winning estimate. As they began repair, they discovered additional damage that was not noticed at the time of the initial estimate. And so the updated estimate to, to continue and repair all of the damage is $5,535.65. So that is our request this morning, and I stand for questions.
No questions. Entertainer motion.
Mr. Chad, move approval for Zimmerman's auto body to continue the repair for an estimated cost of $5,535.65.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's, next item is Sheriff's Office requesting amendments to the county property ordinance.
Yes, this will be a public hearing. This is the first reading of the amendments.
At this time, I'd like to announce this is a public hearing. Note that this is a public meeting, and minutes of the hearing are being kept, and the proceedings are being recorded. Any abstentions or acknowledgements of any outside conflicts from the Commissioners? Okay, open the public hearing.
This matter is coming before the Board to amend the county crime property ordinance. This was adopted some time ago, I think 2008. And it's a little outdated. Some of the statutory references are a little bit, have changed since then. So the Lieutenant went through and proposed some amendments to it. If you have any questions about those amendments, it's primarily adding to the list of what is criminal activity for the purposes of the ordinance. And then also, the other change is that it's the activity on the property and within 400 feet of the property would qualify.
At this time, I'll take any public comments in opposition to the ordinance. Seeing none, any support of the ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close testimony and procedure for decision.
This, before the, we've had the first reading, so we'd like to set the second reading for the next board meeting, which is April 5th.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Do we do that in a public hearing, or do you want to go out and do that?
Yeah, probably after the public hearings close.
At this time, we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chad, make a motion that we have set the second reading for the first meeting in April of 2023.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Carrie's.
Thank you.
Camera purchase. To the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Roberts. This one, I'm very excited to present. The opportunity came to us to apply for a grant through City-County Insurance. And they have given us $15,000 for the purchase of body-worn cameras. As you guys will recall, a couple of meetings ago, I came before you to request authorization for V300 WatchGuard cameras. Those were, we're coming in with our vehicle lease. So we want to continue to expand that program. And so this $15,000 will allow us to purchase 13 additional V300 body cameras from Motorola Solutions. This should allow us to fully implement the V300, which is the most updated camera system in patrol. And then we're going to take the, the current Vista cameras that are in patrol and roll them down into the jail to implement a body-worn camera system down there as well. So the equipment that we have is not going to go unutilized. It's going to be repurposed, and this is going to help us get to that end, probably about a year sooner than, than we would have without this grant money. So this is an unmatched grant, so it's a direct $15,000 to the county. You'll notice that 13 cameras puts us a little bit over, so I request approval for purchases of 13 WatchGuard V300 cameras for a total cost of $15,470. Any questions?
Just to be clear, the 470 would be general?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chad, I would like to make the motion to approve purchases of 13 WatchGuard V300 body cameras from Motorola Solutions for a total cost of $15,470.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chipping container purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. So before you, we have state court files, which are, we're required to store currently, and we have them in an igloo out at the depot. And there's no power or lighting or anything so that they can scan them. And there's no power or lighting or anything so that they can scan them. So this would be a request to purchase a 40 footer and two 20 footers to place on the vacant lot by Stafford Hansel so that the state courts could start scanning files on a regular basis.
Will this be where the university trailer used to be?
Yes.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, move approval to purchase three storage units from Northwestern Catered Services in the amount of $11,100.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Justice Center makeup air units.
So out of the, the Justice Center, we just replaced the makeup gear, air unit that covers the kitchen area. And then in, in that process, I was informed that one of the other units was, has not been working for some time. And then in the middle of checking that, the other unit failed. And I've had two vendors in, both vendors have stated it's not worth trying to repair. Replacement is necessary. So I would like to go out for bid for replacement of those units.
Do you have any idea how much roughly that'll cost?
I'm gonna guess probably 80 to 90,000 apiece, so 180,000.
I know that we were talking, trying to find our own ad, but I guess we'll have to wait to see what the, what the cost comes in. My question is, you say go out to bid, are you going to advertise it? Where's it going to be advertised?
It'll be on the county website, and then we will, we will notify all the local vendors and...
Mr. Chair, I authorize issues to go out for proposals for makeup air unit replacement.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Hansel Government Center control.
So we are on the tail end of the last of the equipment replacement. The chiller, the new chiller has been installed. As soon as the weather gets a little warmer, we'll do the startup procedures and, and all the testing for that. And the last piece of the puzzle is upgrading the software that controls the HVAC system. The current software is very limited, and we cannot change a lot of things like scheduling and stuff like that. So the new software would integrate into the existing software we have here at the courthouse, so we'd actually be able to control both systems off the same software. So I'd like to go out for bid for that.
Is that an app based software, or is it?
It's web based, yeah.
Web.
I don't. I authorize the issue and some requests for controls.
Second motion?
Been a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, stick around, Mark.
Yep.
Elevator maintenance.
Doug has that one. So that's the, basically, I can't remember, is that the five year? Yeah. It's every five years, we're required to do load testing on the elevators to make sure they're still capable of doing what they're supposed to do. And this is from Otis to come in and do that load testing at Stafford Hansel.
Mr. Chair, move approval to pay, make payable to the show.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, stick around, Mark. Maintenance payable.
Yeah, this was unfortunately a screw up on my part. I forgot to pass this through when I received it. But this is for the repairs to the sidewalk at the Milton Free Water Broadway building. We had an individual that tripped and fell with the lifted sidewalks, and at the request of CIS, our insurance company, we moved forward and replaced the questionable sidewalk for the $5,730.50 to Jones' excavation from Milton Free Water.
Will there be a latent fee attached to this?
No, I talked to him yesterday and told him it was my screw up, so he was, he was fine.
I got an on the ground question. This is 21 feet. What about the rest and the rest on the side? So that's not in great shape either.
The only, the other part that's, the driveway entrance is a little bit questionable, and then the sidewalk on the other side of that. Those are both on my list in the next budget cycle to move forward on those. So this was kind of an emergency deal if somebody fell.
Questions, concerns?
I'll approve payable to Jones' excavation in the amount of $5,730.50.
Second.
All those, there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
Perfect, thanks.
You got to hear in record time. Next item on the agenda is a payable for election.
Good morning commissioners. Dan Lanai, Director of Administrative Services for the county. Before you is a payable for Sunveil for election envelopes. And that's for 150,000 envelopes altogether, which will get us through two elections. We send them off to the place that does the inserting for us, and then we have 50,000 of them here that we can utilize for replacement ballots and supplementals for when people change their address between when the envelopes go out or change their party and stuff.
Questions?
I think it's surprising how much that is. I mean, people don't realize that.
Yeah, elections are cheap.
No, elections are cheap.
It's sad that we don't get more said back, yet that's, yeah.
Just, just in the things that we have to do for each election, it's, it's over a dollar, it's about a dollar and a half now to get a envelope into a ballot in each person's hands, and we have approximately, close to 50,000 individuals in the county. So, so yes, it is costly.
And 36 counties that vote were 36.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, anyway.
I move to approve and sign, I, I move to approve payable to Sunveil.
So, that got me wanting to say, right, Sunveil.
Sunveil, in the amount of $10,899.
Second the motion, I'm glad I didn't hear it say it.
There's a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Probably should pass it.
Thank you commissioners.
Cobra pipe purchase.
Patiently waiting. Not even nervous.
Morning commissioners. LG Block, Umatilla County Public Works. Before you, they have a request to purchase 80 feet of Cobra pipe. We had a recent failure down on East Walls Road in Hermison on a irrigation canal when they're starting to turn the water on in two weeks. So it was kind of emergency, it's a very busy road, a lot of truck traffic, and trying to get it done before they put the water in.
Mr. Chair, move approval of payment for $19,188 to contact engineer decisions.
Aye, second.
I was asked to make sure that we, I can't even go there.
No, I'm sure you were. I have no problem. Whatever questions you have.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the gate permit. So we have a request for the placement of a gate.
Okay, since Mr. Fellows is not here.
There's Mr. Um...
Yeah, we all have, yeah.
Yeah.
Basically to, as background, the county received an application for property owners to, for the placement of gates up on two public roads, Pike's Peak Road and Mormon Grade Road. All of the property owners that are impacted by the road have signed or consented to the gates, and so the matters before the board for consideration. This is a public road, which the Board of Commissioners has jurisdiction over. There's not really much criteria to, for the placement of a gate, but you do by law have the ability to put any conditions you want on the placement.
It's all private land above the gate, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
And all those property owners are in agreement?
Yes.
But Tom, do you want to come up and have a couple words? Please state your names so we have it for the record.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Beechner, and I'm from Walla Walla, and I own property up on Pike's Peak. And we have been impacted as all the, all the landowners in a number of ways. A lot of illegal dumping is going on. I don't know where all the couches and chairs are coming from, but we find them strewn along the road all the time. I've had livestock shot and killed because of people target practicing off of the roads. The roads also have been, especially Mormon Grade, there's sections of that that this time of year are almost impassable, except for the four wheelers that like to go up and, and try and get through and tear things up, which makes it difficult for us to access our property. We've also had a, a number of trespass problems where people have come onto private property and done various things, you know, shed hunting, mushroom picking and that type of thing before we can get there as a family to, to do those things on our own property. This road closure does not affect any public land. These two roads only service private property owners. And we've just gotten to the point where because of our equipment being vandalized, our cabins being vandalized and that type of thing, we, we just don't know where else to turn. We're at the northeast corner of the county, which makes it more difficult for policing and fire. And one of the, the big concerns that we have as well is there's a number of landowners who are tree farmers, and the, sometimes the youth in the public will go up and set up bonfires in August and have parties at night, and those just scare the bee jeepers out of us. So anyway, we request your careful consideration of our request to allow us to gate these roads.
Every time you make a point, I see several heads in the audience nodding. So I'm assuming that you're all property owners up there as well?
That is correct.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I see no reason not to approve this. I mean, all the property owners who are affected, most of them are probably in the room today, and everybody's signed the, the letter, and there's no opposition. Is that correct, counsel?
That's correct.
With that, Mr. Chair, I move approval for the application for placement of the gates on Pike's Peak Road and Mormon Grade Road and second permit.
Well, I, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Beechner and I talked yesterday, and actually we have ground up on Government Mountain, so I know exactly what he's talking about. People can't stay on the roads. And so it's very irritating, and I'm sure as private property owners, it's very disheartening when you go up and you find people haven't been on the roads. I have a couple of questions. One, we have a gate on our property that we share. The big conversation for decades has been keys, and so I'm sure you've worked that out, right? Among all the property owners and how you're going to handle the key thing?
Yes, I, I'm, you know, what we would, pardon me?
It's already a discussion, isn't it? Yeah.
What we would do is, is have key to like locks on, on both of the, the gates that need to be put up. And then, you know, amongst us, we'll figure out how to get the keys to, you know, individuals. For example, if I have somebody that wants to come up to the cabin, you know, we'll have the ability to get them a key and, and have access to the road. So, yes.
Okay. And then you have towers up there.
Yes.
So those folks will have access to those towers, right?
Yes, those communication towers on Pike's Peak are on our property, and absolutely, we're not going to cut our nose off to spite our face and keep them out. So we'll make sure that they have access, for sure.
The other thing I wanted to mention is we talked about, let's see, the three, the two roads are, let's see, Mormon Grade Road and Pike's Peak Road, but McKay Road, we decided that wasn't a public road. Is that right?
That was the understanding that we got from the Public Works Department, and so...
Is there some question there? Because I know you're gonna, you're gonna gate that also.
Yes.
Okay.
So actually, there would be three gates, but it's our understanding that McKay Grade, so you got Pike's Peak, Mormon Grade, and then McKay Grade comes in and, and ties into Mormon Grade, and we would gate that close to the Oregon line as well to make sure that people can't come up and tear things up.
And you've got signatures on McKay Road also, right?
Correct, yes. When, when we did the canvassing of the property owners, we included all the property owners on McKay, because at that time, we didn't know that it wasn't a, you know, a public road. And so those are all covered as well.
Second.
I, I'm glad you brought up the keys to the gates, because being a gatekeeper, only one, not three. The, that midnight call from the co-op can get, when somebody changes the gate or puts, hooks it up in the wrong spot, puts a link inside of a, a lock, doesn't matter if you have the key or not, if it doesn't get hooked right. So good luck with that.
Thank you.
I'd like to see if it would be worry free, but you're following well.
It's, it, no, we will have a few bumps in the road, so to speak.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you all coming today.
Next item is software payable from taxation.
Good morning, I'm Rachel Reynolds with the, I'm the Director of the Assessment, Taxation and GIS Department. I came before you in October for approval to change out to the e-filing of the personal property, and we have done so and done that, and I would say right now, we've got about, about 65 to 70% of all personal property returns are being filed through our e-filing system, which is very exciting. But now we're asking to pay that bill of the $9,500.
Questions? All those in, or, if you entertain a motion?
I move to approve payable to Helion Software in the amount of $9,500.
Second motion.
Paying a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a license purchase for ATV.
So with the going of our GIS department, we're bringing on two additional staff members. First one will be here on April 1st, second one will be here June 1st, which we're super excited about. We've been using the standard license, which has not all of the tools that our cartographer is needing at this time. And so I put out for part of the grant with the emergency management system with Tom Roberts, hoping that we might get some of that money with that grant. I'm sure there's a lot of other competition for it as well. But there's a second grant through Oremap as well for hardware and software purchases. So I, we'll be submitting that grant here by the end of this week to see if we can cover at least a portion of this cost. This software is the Esri Advanced, and it's at the cost of $15,400. Oremap's at this time, if we were to get that grant, would cover 9,900 of it. If we also got the other grant, we'd have full coverage of it. So I'm asking for today, if we can, I get approval for the purchase of the advanced license.
Wow. I look forward to hearing whether you know you had a couple grants. With that, Mr. Chair, I have approval to purchase the Esri Advanced license in the amount of $15,400.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Before I ask for a vote, I do want to say thanks to Rachel for staying dedicated to this GIS program. It's near and dear to my heart with a couple of other projects we have going in the county and the city that rolls into the Esri program. So it's, we're not a one off county by any means. We're using Esri, it ties into the statewide system, and it becomes even that more efficient. So thanks, Rachel, for having that for sure. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion. Where are you?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sorry.
Are you pleased with the, the changes?
Yes.
That's happening in your department?
Okay. I mean, overall? Overall, we're making some great headway. I can tell you right now, I've been working on the personal property returns myself, because one, that's how I can gauge of thing, how things are working and how efficient they're becoming. And I can complete up to over 50 accounts in a day right now, working through the electronic system. And John, my deputy director, is working on the paper version, and it's a lot slower. So we will recoup the nine, yeah, the $9,500 pretty quick, is what we've put in for Helion. This GIS move is going to be excellent with the amount of layers we're going to start developing and the directions we're going. We actually spoke with Esri this morning on some analytical tools that we'll be using with our data analyst and getting her up on board, so we can be looking at doing analysis for health department and coordinating that with our mapping system, road departments. It's, it's wide open. So it's super exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Next item on the agenda is the approved two year annual payment for the health department.
Good morning. So this first one is for approval for our, our second year payment for our health-based cloud data system for our septic system program. When we started this a year ago, we started the implementation modification updates phase of this. The original implementation timeline was going to be this last fall. We haven't quite implemented, there's been a few things that have slowed things down, a few of those on the contractors' end, a few of those on our end of just not, you know, getting some things in place in, in between, in between other work that we're doing. But things, things are moving, moving along well, and my staff report they're really excited about this system and what it's going to allow for us to do with the septic, septic program. And the amount is $5,000 for the year that we'll be using our public health modernization funds to cover.
Discussion. Entertainer motion.
Mr. Chair, move approval?
I'm second.
There's been a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, don't go away, is emergency kit purchases.
Yes, so these are some kits that we're wanting to purchase some individual items, put them together in kits that will be handed out to community members at different events and activities that, that we attend and conduct. The genesis of this is really to, you know, conversation starter, if you will, of getting people to think about how preparedness, how they can be planning for preparedness for their homes, their families, what, what their resources they should be thinking about, while also providing usable items that are not just, you know, throwaway swag items that will be branded with our logo. The funding for this is coming from two of our different grants from OHA, both of which this was written into in the work plans and budgets when we submitted for that earlier in the year. Our public... Our Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response Program and the Public Health Modernization Funds that we receive.
How many total?
So there's a number of items. They, they range from 450 items to 200, to 200 items, depending on the item. It's a, a number of items that, you know, we're trying to account for different, different items people may need while still being usable. One of the, one of the items that I expect will be a, a hot item that people will want to use will be the power banks, that purchasing or, you know, essentially battery banks that you can charge up and then can be used to charge cell phone in the case of power outage or in a, in a scenario where you don't have a way to plug in.
I think you guys did a really good job with them. Congratulations. Other questions?
Kudos on that goes to my staff, Molly.
I'm with Dan. I looked over the items and I, you're right. I mean, they're not going to be things that people are going to throw away. They're going to be using them. And I think that's pretty, a good idea, good, you know, marketing tool.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, most of them will be branded. The pricing includes the, the company branding them with our logo.
The only question I had, you already answered it, was the, does this come from general funds question? Is the answer reasonable?
No, no general funds.
Entertained a motion?
Yeah. I move, I approve the purchase of the attached items for the PHEPR, I don't know how you would say that, kits at a combined cost of $24,444.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Three, three items today. Property sales, next item on the agenda.
Okay. This is coming before the Board to authorize a sale of property. This is a foreclosed piece of property. It's an unimproved lot in Pendleton. It went through the auction last year. No one bid on it. It was available for sale since then. We have finally received a bid on it, and so it's recommended that the bid be accepted. It exceeds the amount that it was available for sale at the auction. And so it meets all the statutory requirements, and it is, it can be approved if you want.
Questions or comments?
I move to adopt order number BCC 2023-012.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is civil rights program.
Okay, this is coming before the Board for approval. This is a Yumitala County Civil Rights Program. Previously, the County has adopted policies regarding the ADA and what its requirements are. Those have been primarily done through personnel policies. So under some of the federal funding the County is currently receiving, particularly like a CDBG grant and transit authority funds, requires that the County have a county-wide civil rights program. So what this is doing is, plan's been developed, meeting all of the statutory requirements, and so it's before the Board for approval. This is for both under Title VI and the ADA.
Mr. Chair, move adoption of order BCC 2023-011.
Second.
On motion and a second to adopt ordinance number BCC 2023-011. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is limited English proficiency plan.
And similar to the last item, this is also required as part of the same funding. It's a limited English proficiency plan. Again, it's been reviewed and hopefully meets the requirements for the plan. In Yumitala County, it's about approximately 8.6% of the population says they speak English less than well under the last census. So as, that the, some of the departments already have their own plan, and so this would be a county-wide plan as well.
Questions, comments?
I move to adopt order number BCC 2023-014.
Second.
There's an order, a motion and a second to adopt order BCC 2023-014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is only the non-discrimination policy.
Okay, this is another item for the same purpose. For federal funding, we require to have a non-discrimination policy. This is prohibiting discrimination on the basis of disability, similar to the ADA. And so this is just a policy on its own, along with the procedures for it.
Mr. Chair, move adoption of order BCC 2023-010.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt order BCC 2023-010. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agape House purchases.
Okay, this is coming before the Board for approval for some purchases. This is being funded by the Community Development Block Grant for the Agape House for the food bank under the ARPAFINS. And so there are several components of it that you've already approved. What's now is two additional items for approval. One is to purchase two refrigerators and two freezers. And then the other one is to purchase 78 plastic storage bins.
Did I see on here that this is kind of completes the full CDBG for...
No, there's still some additional items that are, need clarification yet, still pending. Let's see, you've already authorized the van as well as two forklifts. And then this will have some, and I think there's still some storage items that they wanted to see.
That, that's one CBDG grant that has been taken well care of, for sure. Comments, concerns?
Yeah, I was, I have to be honest, when I saw 78 plastic storage bins, I was thinking of all my Tucker Totes that I have at home, thinking, I could do better than that. And then I looked at what they were actually buying.
I did the same thing. I was like, what?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it was a little cheaper than the other bid they got too, so.
Oh, was it? I'll move to authorize the purchase of two refrigerators, two freezers from Restaurant Store in the amount of $21,748, and authorize past, purchase, oh, two separate ones?
So I'll second, I'll second your first motion.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I authorize the purchase of 78 plastic storage bins from PIL Macro Plastics in the amount of $9,866.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is purchase contract for fiberglass pipe.
Okay. Previously, an invitation to bid was authorized by the Board, and it went out for, this is for fiberglass pipe, and two birds were received. And the recommendation is to award the contract to the lower bid, which is future pipe in the amount of $5,417,590.
Comments? Discussion? Entertained a motion?
I would move approval of purchase.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the, a motion carries, next item on the agenda is to award a contract purchase of pumps and motors.
This is also coming before the Board to give its notice of intent to award a contract as for the pipeline project. This one is for pumps and motors for the project. From the invitation to bid, three bids were received. And in this case, the recommendation is not to award to the lower bidder. The lower bidder had one item that was not included in the bid, and so due to that, it was found non-responsive. And so the recommendation is to award it to the second lowest, which is Pasco Machine in the amount of $1,848,762.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of payment.
I have a question.
Sure.
From the time that we ordered the, the pumps and motors, is there any idea how long it'll take to get them?
All of these items are, it's going to be sometime, they're hoping to have everything by October 1st.
Second.
There is a motion to approve the purchase, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Final item on the agenda today is a general contractor request for proposals.
And based on that last question, it's because of the extended period of time, this project is going sort of backwards, rather than going up for a general contractor that would do everything. We went out and acquired the equipment and items first, and now we're going to hopefully get a general contractor. And so that's what's before the Board now, is to authorize issuance of a request proposal for a general contractor for the pipeline project.
Mr. Chair, I would authorize issuance of a request for proposal for a general contractor. Sorry, it's my project.
I have a question again. I, are these specialized? Are we going to find a general contractor that's going to be in the area?
They think they, yes. There's some, the consultants think that there are some, but they think there's probably only a couple.
Okay. Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the solicitation of a general contractor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for completing the agenda fairly rapidly for that amount of, thanks. Any Commissioner comments? All right. At this time, I'm going to adjourn. Go to Commissioner.